I'm Gina Galpin and I'm a special education teacher at Alta Brown with Danica. And we understand that Engage New York can be very challenging for our students with special needs. We have had a lot of success with our students this year and we would, we plan to provide a lot of professional development to teachers on how they can provide accommodations and make modifications in order to meet students' individual needs and in order to meet their IEP goals if appropriate. We're recommending that they're able to teach modules from lower grades to their students in order to meet their goals and they can stay at the concrete level longer. A lot of teachers didn't understand that they could do that. They were trying to have fidelity and move as quickly as the program was suggesting. Danica and I have stayed or kept our students at the concrete level so that they can continue to use those models to help them see and understand how the math works. And it's actually worked very well and our students have been very successful with it. We're going to provide professional development on writing IEP goals to support Engage New York if it's adopted and more information about staying at the concrete, moving to representational, and even if Engage New York is suggesting an abstract way of solving, that they can still have fidelity but stay at the concrete level. And eventually, they might get there, they might not, because many of our students, it takes them much longer to move to that abstract level. They're also able to use supplemental materials as long as they support the standards and what they're trying to teach and the IEP goals of the students. Students in resource, we recommend that they're exposed to the curriculum as much as possible because they spend the majority of their day in the general education classroom. And then any call-out time would happen after the concept development that we talked about earlier. And that's how Danica and I have done it this year. We poll the students after the lesson has been taught and then they bring their work, the problem set to us, and we provide accommodations for them to complete that. And sometimes, we change it a little bit. We give them other models that they've already learned in Engage New York, so it's not something completely different, but we're just allowing them to use the models and the strategies that they're more successful with. Teachers in self-contained classrooms, we would like for them to use Engage New York as much as possible, but we realize that their students have even more unique needs than some of our other students. And so, they have a little bit more flexibility. They'll be teaching a grade level or two below if needed to meet their students' needs and they can also bring in supplemental materials. A lot of teachers did not understand how they could adapt and make accommodations for their students. They thought they had to stick with what Engage New York was telling them. But there are ways for them to still have fidelity but make their students more successful by slowing down, not introducing strategies as quickly as Engage New York suggests, and not moving to that abstract level so quickly. So, we will provide professional development to all teachers, but a lot to our special education teachers who have a bigger job with making accommodations for their students. Do you want to say anything, Danica?
With fluency, we're kind of talking about two different things. One is the fluency that's already built within Engage New York and through our focus groups and our teacher surveys. A lot of concern was about basic fact fluency, so we've addressed both of them. So, for the basic fact fluency, that is included in Engage New York, really at those lower levels, but the higher you get, they've kind of pulled that out, assuming that the kids have mastered that. So, if you have students that have not mastered that, we've built in the flexibility that teachers can pull in resources to address those basic facts. Then when we talk about the fluency built within Engage New York, there are several different activities and ideas that they can use. Teachers can pick and choose which ones. They can do all of them, they can do one of them. If they, because a lot of times, the different fluencies have different procedures that you really can have to work on. So, if they want to repeat a fluency, you know, every day for a week, they're given that flexibility. So, just to make adjustments as they see fit for their students. And I think that's it. So, just building that flexibility in that teacher choice, so how to best address their students.
I think in the beginning of the year too, when we were first looking at everything, we still had our heart set as fluency as memorization of the basic facts that you had talked about earlier. We had fast math and even, you think about flashcards and things like that, where Engage New York, like the Common Core and everything else, is more turning towards instead of memorization into methods. And so, there was a lag in the beginning of the year of sort of us waiting for the fact fluency, waiting for the flashcards, waiting. And really what it is, is teaching a method to figure out a basic fact and then with the repetition that comes with the lessons throughout the entire year, you end up not only memorizing, but if you do hit a point where you don't know, you have a method to go with it. Just as an example for multiplication facts, which I teach 4th grade at Buffalo Jones, so we do multiplication. And so, last year, if you would come to my room at this point in the year and said, "What's eight times seven?", you would look and you would have kids who knew the fact and you would have kids who didn't know the fact. And so, it was either "I know" or "nothing." And the difference this year is that you would come in and you would say, "What's eight times seven?", and you would have kids that know. They've memorized that fact, they know it, not through a memorization tactic, but just they've memorized it as we've gone. And the other kids who previously didn't know the fact will say, "Eight times seven, okay, I'm going to count by eights. Eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, forty, forty-eight, sixty-six." So, that's their, I think I got that right? So, point being though, that they have the method now. And so, as they move forward, and the younger grades are working on these methods in addition to subtraction, and then the older elementary going into the multiplication, division, and things like that. So, basically, we were kind of taken aback, waiting for these sprints, waiting for these time tests, waiting. And really, going forward, this modification here, these here, are going to hit that earlier with a different mindset. And, you know, we heard earlier about looking for that repetition more through the year. And those fluency activities are very similar as you go. And so, while we finished multiplication and division months ago, and I meant to fractions and decimals, there'll be a fluency activity called multiplying two-digit by two-digit. So, they take it and they sort of sprinkle it as you go.
And I can answer that too. As a 3rd grade teacher, we introduced multiplication a lot. And like you said, at this time of last year, they wouldn't know it or they would. And now, my kids sing songs to it, just a YouTube song that we put into your view and clean it up for them, and they sing along to it and the same thing, skip count it right off. And we got this at a grade level meeting we went to in the fall, and some teachers were saying, "We don't, we don't know, or we're bored, we don't, we don't even want to follow the skip count, just two, four, six." But my partner teacher and I didn't know any different, and we said, "Well, our kids do it to a YouTube song." And even now, they'll know there's Sergeant Sevens, the sixes by a dance and bow, but they know the song just right off the top of their head. And if they can take that on the 4th grade, then we'll help them.
And sort of, she's highlighting here a piece of Engage New York that I don't know if it was missed or just, it is different in that this is a very content-heavy curriculum. Content, content, con, and so, the method of going about doing that in the beginning of the year, when it was just taught as, do it as, you know, fidel, fidel, with as much fidelity as possible. And so, people took that in very different ways. And so, fidelity could have meant, do it exactly as the script says. Fidelity could have meant, like we just heard, okay, the content says we need to do the count buys, what ways can we do that that will engage the students? And so, you have a wide range of people teaching that are going to take that differently. And so, the purpose of this, of these modifications is to more make sure that everyone understands going forward, now that we understand what's going on with Engage New York, how can we do that the most effectively and have everyone feel that they're doing it to the best of their ability? So, no one feels like it's above their head, no one feels like they can't teach the way that they want to teach, but at the end of the day, the content objectives, the language objectives, those are the same. And so, the way we go about doing that is kind of the highlight of this presentation here.
Well, and just another thing on fluency, the lack of fluency research says in basic math facts is directly responsible for poor performance in higher-level math courses. So, as they get into high school, college, if they don't have fluency in their basic math facts, they struggle. So, I like that it's built in and it's a focus, it's a component of Engage New York. And another example, as the higher grades, factoring, fractions, estimation, mental math, these are all essential skills that are difficult or impossible without fluency in the basic facts. So, we spend fifth grades all about fractions. So, and knowing your multiplication backs, we use those two items every day, regardless of what we're doing and place value and understanding place value. So, again, if fluency is there, it's built in, it's a systematic system of the daily drills, the sprint focuses on the process, the patterns, and the methods like he mentioned. And I try to make it fun. We can do fluency using Kagan structures, repeated sprints, and working on our back fluency.
I'm Rod Wells, math coach at Buffalo Jones. And we came up with some homework guidelines because homework was also a theme that kept recurring. Homework should be at an independent level, which would be independent level of students at 80% accuracy. So, then we'd use the homework to reinforce facts, computational fluency, and concepts. And of course, as mentioned earlier, do not send homework home that's frustrating to the students and parents. And it's very important, when that engaged homework goes home, that there is an accurate, correct classroom example attached. So, and then we also address the absent students, especially the students that are absent for an extended time, if they're gone for a week or two weeks. And then there should be a system in place that includes nodes, examples, peer coaching, small group time may be used for reinforcement when the students return and help them solidify that missed instruction. And we felt it very important that students not be expected, of course, to do all of those problem sets or all the homework for those extended absences, but rather, new overall objectives and teach the big ideas. And as was mentioned earlier by, I think by Megan, to get them caught up, or Danica, someone mentioned it, so. And assessment was another theme. There are two categories of assessments, formative and summative. And mid, they're called mid-module and end-of-module assessments. And the mid-module assessments can be used as formative or summative, end-of-module assessments are strictly used as summative. And then Engage New York, Engage New York allows you to review. There is a day for review, then the assessment, and then a remediation piece. And use that, of course, to guide your instruction. And the goal of the formative assessments is to guide the students in improvements and let learn your ongoing learning context. So, and those are not required to be entered as a grade, but they're used to help the teacher know what the students are gaining and knowing. And we put flexibility in there too, because some of the concern was, "Oh, man, these end-of-module assessments are like five pages long, they're very, very extensive." So, we've allowed the teachers to maybe teach the components of Engage New York and use the exit ticket, or the application problem, or the, excuse me, the exit tickets or the problem sets, or the debriefing questions as little formative assessments as you go along. You also have the option, as Diana mentioned earlier, it's topics, then lessons within the topic. And sometimes, it's like topics A through H, before you might have an end-of-module assessment, and there's multiple lessons in each of those topics. By the time they get to the end, they may have forgotten what was taught in topic A. So, the teacher has that flexibility to give a small assessment after topic A, or assessment after topic B, or maybe they might choose ABC, and then do a small assessment. So, we built that, that piece in. And that gives the teacher a flexibility of when to assess. And of course, we also, some of the conversation was there's not a strict computational piece on the end-of-module assessment. So, if the teacher wanted to add a computational page to the assessment and shorten it a bit or fix the question, redo the question so it meets the student's needs, the rubric will also have to be adjusted if you do that. But of course, you do that with conversation with the coach and maybe.
I'm actually curious. I could go into a couple of things personally about the assessments that I've seen this year, but I know that when parents talk to all of you, when parents talk to us, I know a big piece of that has been homework. I'm curious to hear if anyone has heard questions or comments or concerns about the built-in assessments, specifically the things that Rod had talked about, kind of before I jump into my piece. I just kind of wanted to know what we've heard about assessments so far, if anything.
I'm not hearing anything on that.
Okay. That tells me, which is a good thing, that these have been used somewhat correctly as a classroom tool. These assessments that, and they're pre-made, depending on the length of the module, there could be two or there could be just one at the end, but they are incredibly rigorous. They're very difficult. But that is because they do not just simply ask you to complete a math problem or to answer a simple one-step problem. What they do is take all the concepts learned since the last test and compile it into questions of serious, high-level thinking, that you don't just take what you did and do something with it, but you, you have to twist and turn. And so, I know what I found this year, and I'm sure other teachers have heard, and I know I've heard, is that taking the test and using it to teach how to do some of those things will directly affect them moving forward when it comes to state testing, will directly affect them as they go to higher grades, because they're getting exposure to a really high level of thinking. And so, it's been important for us to not leave them on an island. And so, assessment-wise, with what Rod just covered, the big piece moving forward is have them take the test, have them do it, and then come back to it and see where did they have trouble, where did they do really well, and you can celebrate that. But where could we, I, there have been times this year of a question that I've just had to completely go over step by step. And so, that, that piece of flexibility is where we'll see with the assessments of using it as a real tool as opposed to leaving them alone and trying to figure that out.
One thing, Rob, look at assessments at the secondary level. I know that we haven't gone through all of our, and looked at our modifications yet at the secondary level, but I know that one thing I noticed and thought about right off the bat when we were talking about assessments is that flexibility to have assessments more often is going to be huge at the high school level, because at least with the Algebra I curriculum, which is, some 8th grade does it and the 9th graders do it. The assessments, because these units are so long, some of them, you're getting maybe one, maybe two assessments in a quarter, and that's huge part of your grade in when you get to that high school level. So, having, and that's one of the things the teachers were upset about, is not being able to assess more often and not having those multiple assessment points throughout, because for one, it does inform your instruction, and for two, it does affect student grades, which at that level is one thing that's top of their mind. So, that assessment piece, I know, will be crucial with modifications, so.
The last topic we covered was technology. And what we said about technology is first, there has to be accountability. If the teachers are going to use technology, the students have to be accountable for the practice or what happens when they use the technology. If you were to walk into a classroom, I do this often when I do walkthroughs, if they're using technology, I ask them what they're doing and why they're doing it. And they should be able to give us an outcome, a reason why they're using the technology and what is expected of them when they use it. And there should be rigor in the technology. So, there's some websites out there that are just little games and practices that maybe aren't so rigorous, that we kind of want to stay away from in the classroom. The technology should be used to strengthen conceptual understanding, understanding fluency and skill mastery and should support the curriculum. Technology can be used during core instruction, I think. She referred to it when she said that she uses those manipulatives and those things that she was showing you. She has those available virtually. All of my teachers use a smart board presentation when they introduce a lesson. It saves on paper, but it also is a really effective way for the kids to see what's going on. And they can use the student response activities as another example. It needs to be used, technology needs to be used to enhance instruction and support the Kansas College and Crew Ready standards in the Engage New York curriculum. So, we've covered all of those modifications that we've made. Do you have any final questions for us?
Yeah, I want to quote Gary Lee. She was very frustrated, you're very frustrated at the beginning, but at the end, you're super excited, can't wait, which is awesome. I got to see the transformation through a bunch of the board faculty meetings. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to be here to see the progression for years to come, but I'm sure I'll have some people tell me about that. But how do we get that frustrated parent with the upset child? How do we get their progression from totally frustrated to super excited about Johnny's going to do? And if I miss that in the parent case, I apologize, but how do we do that? What's your thought process on that?
I think the talking to the parents. When they're super frustrated, they need to come to the teachers and they need to talk to them and ask them questions and get answers to their questions.
And what if they're not satisfied after that?
Then they need to keep moving. I mean, I think that, you know, there's going to be, and you guys definitely, there's going to be people who are unhappy and we're going to have to work through that.
And what if they're not satisfied after that? Is your, we actually, Johnny and Marie are coming along. I was actually kind of glad to find out that my son, the 7th grade at Kage, who already says anything, and he's doing well in math, but I found that out through Mr. Ninkle. But so, how do I answer a parent that has been frustrated that it's going to get better, but Johnny and little Diamond and Marie are giving it, but the parent can't seem to get it?
There's going to be a board member that feels that way. And I mean, it's not the same.
And I'm not, I'm not, I've had a couple of other people.
She's not here to discuss it, but she's made her point clear.
How do we, how is your plan to get that? Is that part of your parent communication? Because you can have parent night, you can have parent this, parent that, but how is it ongoing? How do we solve that issue? Communication is huge for me, and it has been the last four years. How do you get the parent on board through the pilot program?
Can I, one suggestion I would have, I have, is to get your, if your students are enthusiastic, I think that's going to help ease some of the parent frustration. And when I talk to my students, I let them know, this is a new way, it's a new way for me, it's a new way for you, it's a new way for your parents. If my students can go home and teach their parents, like how can a parent be upset with that if their child is teaching them what they need to know? And I have a student, he goes home every night and he has a notebook and he's, he's doing strategies that we've learned in the classroom, and he'll bring it back to me and be like, torn out of his notebook, "Here, Mrs. Burke, I, I did this for you." You know, he's just so excited and his mom said to me, "Oh, now I'm ready for summer, I'm ready to, to stop hearing about this math." And I, and, and I says, "But your son's not going to let you forget about it because he loves it." And she laughed, she's like, "Oh, I know, I know." Because he goes home, he loves it. And I think if the children, if the students are excited, which that, a lot of that is up to the teacher. If you have an enthusiastic teacher, a teacher who can get kids excited, get kids involved, I don't know how a parent can resist their child being excited about math. You know, that's one way that I would, you know. That's, that's my.
Any other questions for?
Nate has some.
I mean, it's along the same lines. I think, you had asked a question right in the very beginning about those parents who don't come to the parent meetings or that are difficult to get a hold of. And so, we can provide as much education, literature, and handouts as we can. Our kids are the gateway to our parents and they instill a great deal of trust in us. And so, a lot of the issues that they raise to us are because of what they see in their kids, because a lot of them haven't seen them in the classroom or may not know about a lot of things going on at the school. So, specifically in the beginning of the year, I had a parent who came to our parent night and does email me and is very involved and was very against and was very enraged about the way that we were planning and going about doing things in the very beginning of the year. And her demeanor has completely changed specifically because of the success of her students in my class specifically. And I know that that's what it is, because she got all the same literature that everyone else did, she got all the same parent night that everyone else did. And when we hit those, those first rounds of testing, things like that, and her students were doing this, and I could show that at the, show those successes off, I mean, that's really the key. And so, while there was only one slide up here about specific parent involvement, the idea is that by doing everything we can for their kids and by doing it the right way, that that's where they'll start to turn. And so, on face value of the curriculum, they may not be all that into it. When they see their children with these modifications, with the flexibility, with the content, and then they come home and have the ability to do it, I think that's where you're going to start to see a turn of, oh, they actually are being successful. I think success is the key. And so, that's what we're trying to set up here, is a good system for the parents, but the success of the students. And that's where you're going to find that big, that big turn.
Well, I had a parent in the fall that, you know, I think, I admired her attitude. She came to our, one of our first Common Core nights and she said, "I look forward to, I want to learn something new. I want to help my child, so we're going to figure this out." You know, it's like a puzzle. And she said, her attitude was positive. And I think when parents have negative attitudes and the child hears that, then that is telling the child, "Oh, I can't do this because there's a negative vibe to it." I just, so I admired the parent for taking on that positive attitude and, "I can do this, we're going to learn this together and let's figure this out." You know, being a positive example for what they need to know and do.
I've got to agree to that, because I was just tutoring prior, coming tonight, and they're like, "Well, Mrs. Burke, are you going to blah, blah, blah this? Is that why there's not another kid coming?" And I go, "No, I got a meeting actually." And he's asking a thousand questions about it and I'll tell him, like, "Also, a board meeting about the math." He's like, "Oh, the math." He's like, "What do you think about?" I mean, and he's not for it. And their parents aren't for that, but it's them from the parents, you know what I mean?
And don't get me wrong, I love what you all are doing. And it's infectious and contagious, and I think some of the greatest success comes from the greatest struggles. So, and I, like I said, I can't wait for what you guys do in the next years to come.
I cried a lot. I mean, I hated math, I love it now, but.
I've also had a parent that has said that it has promoted much better conversation at the dinner table, that they're putting away their.
I'm still so grateful.
They shut the tina off, just the homework time, and talking to their child has led to them having a better understanding of where their child is mathematically.
But what do you say to the parent who came to the board and commented last week, that there are two ways to look at the data that all of you looked at and that we were just going to be hearing one way and that we needed to look at it a different way because this is a really bad program? Well, I shouldn't say that, but I mean, that seemed to be the tone. This is a bad program, we need to change, we can't just be keeping it to keep it. You know, we don't want to lose two years of math for these kids. And I know some of you have struggled, as you've said at the beginning, have progressed on, but what do we say to those parents who are like, you know, "You didn't look at everything. You didn't look at all the data," which actually says the opposite of what those teachers were saying during their presentation?
We did look at everything. And I think we presented everything to you. It was maybe 120-page document with the positives and the negatives in it. All of those comments, negative and positive comments were there. But we also are educators and we've looked at the research. And the research says the Common Core or the College and Crew Ready standards are, and this material is one of the only, if not the only, that is aligned to those standards. And those are the future of our kids. So, that's why our heart is that we need to do that. I remember working with all of you a year and a half ago, maybe even a few, shorter period of time, when you went to the when you went to the Kansas Association of School Board and supported the Common Core. And I thought that's where you were headed a year ago. So I'm surprised that we're, we're questioning that.
I'm not. I love Engage New York. I'm the one, kind of like her, I hated math, can't stand it. My third grader brought home some homework and he's like, Mom, can you help me? I'm like, I understand this. I, I can help you, I'm excited, I can help you. But there are still those parents out there that we have to answer to and we're responsible for, and ask, having to ask questions like these to make sure that they understand as well that this is well thought out of, this is research. This is not just, to use my husband's phrase, the next best thing. That, and we're not just doing it to do it. You know, I really think that this is a good program. I appreciate the modifications. I appreciate now the emphasis on the flexibility and the other things that you've listed out for the modifications. But, you know, we still have those teachers out there who don't like it, who have the parents who don't like it, and then have the kids who are feeding off of both of those items. So they're not being necessarily as successful as they could be. You know, I think, and that's what frustrates me, I'm like, how can we get everybody to appreciate, not necessarily like it, but appreciate what we're trying to do?
I feel like. Well, I think Dr. Dennis and Lee and Roger given the power over to, what grades was it? Was it six through eight, or six through nine? When you guys said, if you guys can find something else out there that's going to follow along with our core standards, then we can go forth looking at that. And they came back just yesterday and said, we can't find anything. So they're going to proceed with Engage New York.
One of the major things we were tasked with at all levels was to find a curriculum that adhered to the Common Core standards and to the College and Career Ready Standards. That was our priority number one. And if you look at the data recently from education, we, the data shows, Engage New York is the only one, K through eight, that is aligned with College and Career Ready Standards. And that is number one task for us. So that's one of the primary reasons I know that grade seven through nine has said, we want to look at this for us.
So we have done full circle. We've looked at the material, we've tried to present to you our best thinking. And so we'd like to request that the board approves a one-year pilot for Engage New York as presented. K through actual one.
You guys want to reconsider? We've heard a lot of questions from some board members. Some haven't had an opportunity to speak because some of us talk a lot. So is there anyone that hasn't had a question or wants to be asked now?
I, I mean, I, some of my questions still get back to the standard itself. And once you accept the fact that you've got a standard that you've got to meet, what are you, how are you going to do that? And I did not participate in the meditation at the statewide thing a year ago, but I do support my fellow board members as far as there. But that's a different issue. What I take comfort in is what we just heard. And I guess you can't help but be confident in that.
Yeah. Good point.
President, can you take your questions? I do have some concerns. And I do think there's a difference between supporting the Common Core and supporting a particular information or Common Core. I read through all of the modifications and some of them are fairly simplistic. And I'm not sure why teachers maybe didn't feel that they could do those things. Like to be vocal speaking, you know, speaking loudly and dynamically with expression. There are some things that are a little different, but, but by and large, these are things that I think most of our teachers would, and when they do on a day-to-day basis. And so I'm concerned that perhaps the modifications aren't really modifying much. They're, they're not making any real changes for next year. I, I'm disappointed, I guess, that some of the teachers, as I understand, maybe didn't feel that they could do these types of things in teaching this. And I would have liked to, I guess, have had some closer monitoring of this so that we would have the ability to make these modifications maybe back in December rather than at the end of this school year. Because I feel like, you know, there's probably some classrooms that didn't, didn't quite get as far as they would have. I, you know, I'm a little confused when we say, you know, be more concise and consolidate some information, but yet other information we're going to take more time with. I mean, I, and then we have, have also had some of the teachers say that they didn't quite finish the entire program through the end of the year. There were some additional lessons that they just couldn't get to because it was too long. So I think, you know, we do need more time. I'd like to know more about what, what we're going to do at the secondary level after elementary school. I think from enthusiasm and the way the elementary staff has embraced it and is working, it will be effective for those students. But I'm very concerned that at the higher grades, I think it would probably be better to implement by adding one grade level per year rather than trying to, to throw all this at students who have a hundred, or six or seven or eight grades without this method. So I, I guess I would have liked to have more information about the higher level, middle school, high school modifications, because, you know, if it's just speak more clearly and listen to the students and talk about their own experiences, I don't think that's much different than our teacher celebrating tonight.
I think one of the advantages of a pilot program is we're going to get more data. And so I think another year, I think it's hard to move as we've gone with this curriculum. I think it's, has enough merit, at least from my perspective, to invest another year, especially with maybe teachers like this, to, to help us gather more data and confirm. Or otherwise, if the program is doing what we need to do, is get the kids ready for the next level, so.
Jean, would you, are you uncomfortable proceeding on the seven to nine tonight without additional information? Okay, so would it be, because I think at one point the thought was just going K-six and waiting for a presentation on seven, nine. Is that time-wise a possibility?
We could have, what's the next school?
Junaid.
Junaid, we can have something for you.
But is that going to put it?
Junaid, if you want to wait on secondary. I don't want to hold up K-six if that's a concern of a great lot of tests.
But my question is, do you need to have an answer on seven, nine tonight? Or can you wait until Junaid?
Right, yeah. Ideally, it would be great so teachers would know before they left. If that's, if you're not comfortable making that decision without more specifics at, at that level, then we can, we can make it work coming back in June.
For a, might have a discussion other than Jean?